Good evening. My name is Tara Rickum, and I'm the Chair of the Canora Planning Advisory Committee. This is a regular meeting of the Planning Advisory Committee for March the 20th, 2024. As we gather, we recognize that we are on Treaty III lands, which are steep in rich indigenous history and home to many First Nations and Métis people today. We continue to be thankful for the partnerships with indigenous people. We give thanks for the many blessings we enjoy in the city of Canora. We seek wisdom in our minds, clarity in our thinking, truth in our speaking, and always love in our hearts that these principles guide us in our decision-making. So prior to calling the meeting to order, to all members of the public, please send a private message to the Secretary Treasurer and inform them of your legal name and mailing address so it can be entered into the meeting records. I think that most of you have done that probably already, but in case there's somebody new, then please just follow through with that. Please ensure your microphone is on mute and be mindful of what's visible to the public in your surroundings. Please note this meeting is being recorded, and by continuing to be in the meeting, you are consenting to be recorded. Tap Leave Meeting to opt out and exit the session. When it's time for public comments, I will address the participant by the name that was recorded with the Secretary Treasurer at the beginning of this virtual meeting or beforehand. Once your name has been called, please then unmute your microphone or your telephone. All persons addressing the committee shall state their full name and mailing address and must direct their comments from myself, the Chair. Decisions will be mailed or emailed to the applicant agent and to all other interested parties who have provided their mailing address and/or email address to the Secretary Treasurer. The notice of appeal for a minor variance application must be filed with the Secretary Treasurer within 20 days of the making of the decision. The notice of appeal for a land division application must be filed with the Secretary Treasurer within 20 days of the mailing of the notice. Other than the applicant, only a specified person or a public body is defined in Section 1, Subsection 1 of the Planning Act has the ability to appeal the decision made by the Canora Planning Advisory Committee to the Ontario Land Tribunal. The Secretary Treasurer for the Canora Planning Advisory Committee is Melissa Shaw, and the Director of Building and Planning is Janice Boccalo. Alright, so we'll call this meeting to order and ask if there are any additions to the agenda. I have none this evening. Okay. Declaration of interest by a member for this meeting or the meeting which member was not present?
No, concerning that's for the previous.
Sorry?
Myself concerning the minutes of the previous meeting, the special meeting.
You, oh.
I wasn't present.
Okay. So for the approval minutes, anyone who's been participating, that would be the same with me. So approval minutes for meetings held for the regular meeting on February 21st, 2024? Any discussion amendments? May I have a motion, please, to approve? Eric Funk and Second, please, and Renee and all in favor? Pretty, thank you. For the special meeting, February 28th, 2024, there are very few of us here who can vote. Any questions, comments, amendments? No? Mover, please? Renee, Seconder? Eric Funk and all in favor? Thank you. That's carried. Any correspondence relating to the applications before the committee?
As of today's date, there was no additional correspondence received. Everything was circulated to the committee in advance of tonight's meeting.
Thank you. Any other correspondence? Any adjournment requests? None. Okay. Alright, so our first application is an application for minor variance, D132403, Kabilka. Is there anybody in the public who wishes to represent this application?
Hello, can you hear me?
And?
This is Bart Stabnitsky, I guess representing Alan Kabilka for the minor variance.
Okay, if you just want to give us, then that would be great.
I guess Al, you can chime in if you want to, but I believe the minor variance was for moving the positioning of an application for a boathouse to be built closer to the property line, projected lot line going out into the lake.
Okay. Cool. Yeah, this is Al Kabilka, am I on?
Yes, you are.
Okay, I wasn't sure if I was getting through. I'm, I did not know I could get on, that's why I got the sun a lot to, to help me out with this project. And I'm here to answer any questions I can about the mayor, the minor variances that we've asked for. And, and we'll go on from there.
Okay, thank you.
So can I, can I show a picture of what we're asking for?
I'm sure. Is it something that we already have seen, maybe?
Um, I don't know. I just sort of did a drawing basically of the lot and the projected lot lines to show you what we're asking for and why we're asking for it.
Okay.
Alright, so can you guys, can you see this?
No.
No.
Okay, you can't, okay. I don't know how we can do this. Well, at any rate, if the way the lot is, it's a challenging lot, it runs at an angle. And there's Mr. Livingston on one side and Mr. Peliquin on the other. I believe we would like to encroach on David Peliquin's side because if we go with the variances off of the property line, the projected property lines, we're going to be building a boathouse right in front of his house. So we're trying to get it over to the side, like the, on the projected lot line so that we can build it over to the side and back a bit, so that we stay in deeper water and out of the front of his apartment, his residence by way of the lot lines, the angle that they run out at. So we're trying to do that, so we're not building a boathouse in front of his house.
Okay, thank you. So Ms. Boccalo will now give the planning report, just so you know that, and then you will have a chance to comment again after that.
Sure.
Okay, thanks.
So I'm, I'm a little confused because the project that was just described by the applicant is not consistent with the application. The application is to obtain a variance for to permit the construction of a single detached dwelling with minimum side yards of 1.5 meters instead of the required 2.5 meters for a two-story dwelling, as well as reducing the easterly side yard to zero meters for the construction of a dock and boat lift, so presumably a boat port with a roof.
That's what I was referring to, yeah.
We have the ability to approve a variance up to zero meters, but we cannot, through the variance process, approve an encroachment onto a neighboring property. So if the drawings that I had received, along with the application, showed the dock at the end of, at the end of the pro, the most southernmost portion of the property, which, as was pointed out, would place it directly in front of, because of the orientation of the neighbor's house pointing in a southeastern direction, that, that boathouse would in fact be located in front of their house. So I'm not sure how the applicant wishes to perceive given that information.
Okay, so Mr. Kabilka, I know you're represented, but if you're here right now, then can I ask you, are you amending your application or are you still making the full application, which was for 1.5 meter side yards for the, for the construction of a single-story house? In a, a two-story house, sorry, in addition to the zero lot line for the dock? Could you just confirm?
No. What, what you have just read is correct. Bart, Bart and myself, Bart just used the wrong language. We're not encroaching into anybody's waterway, like referring to Peliquin's, Dave Peliquin's side. We're always, just what you read is correct. So we just, we just meant encroachment, but he didn't really mean to say that.
Okay, so for the dock, then you're asking for the zero lot line, but what about for the residence?
The 1.5 meters.
Okay, alright, we just need to clarify that then.
Yeah, it's, it's exactly what we applied for.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to let Ms. Kabalow carry on then with her report, okay?
Thank you, Madam Charlene, for retaining that certification. So the subject property is located on the south side of Beach Road with frontage on the lakes and woods. The lot is 15 meters, 50 feet wide, which is consistent with the adjacent property to the east, but smaller than many of the properties along Beach Road. The lot has an irregular shoreline. As a result, it has considerable frontage on the lake, but limited options for dock placement. As we were just discussing, the only place that a dock really could be located with well, respecting the projected lot lines on either side of the lot would be at the extreme south end, putting the dock right in front of the neighbor's house. This is an established residential area with municipal services. The subject property is vacant, is currently vacant. At present, there are no connections to service, services, and there is no curb cut for driveway access. The city has a narrow 1.8-meter storm sewer easement along the east boundary, oh, sorry, along the west boundary of the adjacent property to the east. Engineering has expressed a need to extend this easement into the subject property to provide better access to city infrastructure. So I'd like to draw your attention to the policies of the City of Canora Official Plan that are listed in Section 2 of the report. The established area policies indicate that the existing uses should be preserved and protected from incompatible uses. Residential development is encouraged in the established area. Sections 3.155 of the official plan describes compatibility criteria. So it talks about compatibility being achieved in a variety of ways, including the provision of appropriate setbacks, buffering features, transitions in building heights and massing. So that is just things to keep in mind when we're considering whether or not the application qualifies as a minor variance. Height and massing, new buildings must have regards to the height and massing of adjacent buildings. Where variation in height and massing is proposed, a transition is deemed desirable. Pattern of surrounding community, proposed developments must consider the character of surrounding buildings, including the scale, rhythm, massing, and architectural design. The property is currently zoned R1, residential first density zone. The R1 zone allows for the development of single detached housing and other compatible uses serviced by municipal sewer and lot. The minimum required side yard in the R1 zone is 1.5 meters for a single-story building and 2.5 meters for a two-story building. 4.5-meter side yard setback measured from a projected lot boundary is required for docks. If, if approved, the proposed variance would reduce the required side yard for a two-story dwelling from 2.5 meters to 1.5 meters, a one-meter reduction. And the variance for the dock would reduce the side yard requirement from 4.5 meters to zero meters, a 4.5-meter reduction. The application was circulated to internally to city departments as well as to external agencies. There were no comments and concerns received from external agencies. The city has no concerns, although the engineering department did identify the need for a storm sewer easement. And it suggests that it would be prudent, sorry, and suggests that it would be prudent for the city to do any repairs or replacements of the storm sewer prior to construction of a dwelling. The proponent is also advised that they would be required to connect to city sewer and water. This could involve blasting and the installation of a grinder pump. The installation of a driveway would require an entrance permits and curb cuts. Our costs of these amenities would be borne by the developer. So those are, are things that we were just raising so that the applicant is aware of, of those costs that would be required to develop this property, but which does not impact the zoning elements that we're considering. The four tests of, for an application of minors there, variance, does the application conform to the general intent of the city's official plan? Being one of the smaller lots on Beach Road, the proposed variance would allow the proponent to build a larger dwelling. The effect would be a transition between the massing of larger dwellings to the west and the smaller dwellings to the east. A single-story dwelling is proposed with a walkout basement facing the lake. This would minimize impact from the street. So remember that a 1.5-meter side yard is the minimum requirement for a single-story building, so if it's a single-story on the street front with the 1.5 meters, it would be typical of any other development that's permitted under the bylaw. But as you go further, deeper into the lot where you get your walkout basement, that's when we are it would be more noticeable that you've got a smaller setback. As I said, there's a variety of housing sizes in this area, in addition to some larger lots with bigger mass houses, there is a townhouse development nearby at the intersection of Sixth Street and Beach Road with much higher densities and massing. Does the application conform to the general intent of the zoning bylaw? I've already discussed how 1.5-meter side yards are appropriate for single-story dwellings. And the proposed dwelling does have a single-story front facade, but a two-story rear facade as well for the walkout basement. Due to the lot configuration.
You're on mute.
Okay, so we lost Zoom for a moment, but nobody really missed anything. We were able to stop in time, so thank you.
The proposed dock location, with this variance, the proposed dock could be located anywhere along the shoreline. It would not be allowed to extend beyond the projection of the property line. As you can see from the image, it looks like there would be about 20, 25 feet, maybe 20 feet between the shoreline and that projected property line. The dock could not extend past that point. Without this variance, it would have to stop 4.5 meters inside that line, which is not leaving much room for any dock whatsoever. Is the application desirable or appropriate development for the land building or structure? Desirable development of land is development that is compatible with an established community, existing buildings and development. The variance will allow construction of a dwelling and dock that appears similar in character to other residences in the neighborhood. Is the proposed variance minor in nature? The variance, as requested, is minor, appearing to be the minimum required to permit the proposed construction. Department's analysis and recommendation, the proposed variance meets the four tests of a minor variance and may be approved, provided PAC is satisfied that the development will not cause undue hardship to neighboring landowners. Letters of objection have been reported from four, five, sorry, property owners. PAC is encouraged to consider information shared by the public while making their decision. Although there was no objection to the proposed variance from engineering, given the need for a storm sewer easement and the proximity of the neighboring dwelling on the east side of this property, is my recommendation that the variance only be granted for the westernmost side yard. And that PAC is requested to require the storm sewer easement as a condition of approval. It is therefore recommended that PAC application D132402 to seek relief from the City of Canora zoning bylaw 101, 215, Section 4.1.3D be approved to allow a single detached dwelling with a minimum required western side yard of 1.5 meter and a dock with an eastern side yard of zero meters be approved, subject to the following condition, that easements are registered to grant the City of Canora access to storm sewer infrastructure.
Thank you, thank you. So, um, have we still got them here? Okay, Mr. Kabilka. So did you understand then that the recommendation is that the 1.5 meters be approved only for the western side of the property? Did you hear that part?
Yes, I heard that part.
Okay.
I, the question is, no, I just want to question the storm sewer. Is not the storm sewer done? And you're looking for an easement? And was that easement not, when the storm sewer was done, was that not easement in place? Or did Mr. Peliquin do that storm sewer requested by the city many years ago? Because we've had that property since 1989, and we've never asked, the city never ever asked us for an easement to go through the property. So are you talking about a new storm sewer that's going to be done?
So I'll, I'll let Ms. Kabalos speak to that.
Thank you. But my understanding is it's an existing storm sewer that was, I don't have the dates in front of me of when it was constructed, but it has been there for, for some time. It is city infrastructure. We have an easement on your neighbor's property, but it is only 1.8 meters wide, which doesn't give us sufficient room to access it if we need to dig it up and replace it. So we're asking for additional access to, to and on your side of the property boundary, so that we have more room to work.
Okay, so at this point, I'm going to ask the committee members if they have any questions or comments, and then we'll hear from the public, anybody who wishes to speak. So anybody from the committee have any questions or comments about this application? Yes?
In the first page of the, of the report, pertaining to the dock, it said that the dock boat lift of the minute, a minimum easterly side yard of 0.0 meters. Is, should that not be the westerly side? Because the easterly side is not where the dock was going to be. It's going to be in the west, southwest corner, right? It.
No, it would be the southeast side.
The southeast side?
Yeah.
It works.
I just looking at it, so this is becoming here.
That's huge, yeah. So they're going to have to have like a bridge, yes. Yes, in the southeast.
It looks like the existing dock or the other adjacent property is like right up, if, if the stake in the ground I saw is, is a property line.
Okay, so, so it is certainly for the southeast corner. Do you have another question about, yeah?
I'm still confused exactly where this dock is planned to go.
Oh, alright.
Can you, can you see us? Can you see us?
Yeah.
You, you can't see this?
No.
Not really.
Fully, you can.
How about, how about, how about, how about this? Can you see this?
Yeah.
Yes.
See how the property line, the southeast side? We want to build the dock there so that it stays away from the front of Mr. Livingston's place. So it's, it's, if you look at it, if you go to the property on, on on the east side, Mr. Peliquin's boathouse is right there, but we would have to get it out all the way, but stay on that side, on the east side, to get the boathouse over. Does that make any sense?
Bart, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, this Dave Peliquin calling here?
Yeah.
Oh, just, can you, can we just hang on? I'm sorry, Mr. Peliquin, but we're just going to leave it to the committee right now to ask our questions, and then you'll certainly have a chance to ask questions through, through the chair, okay, through me? So we're just going to, okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, I was just showing that for clarity, just so you can see, it's not on the west side we want to build, it's on the east side to keep it closer to Al's property, like to, to his place, and it's the zero clearance.
Okay, so, does anybody else have any questions?
There was, Ms. Charlene, in one of the comments, there was a question about the area being a potential spawning area. Is, is that a concern? Would an assessment be needed? Or is the fact that there's already tons of development in this area, does that kind of negate that comment?
Well, if I could comment, I'm not a biologist or a M and R guy, but it's all bedrock there that I see, and I haven't seen any sand in that area, and it would be a pipe dock that's built, not a crib dock. And those are less invasive to the bottom, like it's, you're not doing as much bottom damage.
Okay, so thank you for that, Mr. Stabnitsky, but we'll just allow the planner then to answer that question as well for the committee.
Thank you, Madam Charlene. This, the application was circulated to the Ministry of Natural Resources and Forestry, and comments were of no concern and received from them.
So can I just? So because the regular shape of the lot, the line that extends the property into the water, like what angle is it on?
It is parallel to the property line.
To the east or, or westerly property line?
So, so a straight line. A straight extension of the property line. You don't have.
I mean, I didn't have like two points, but like I just went there this afternoon and it looked, it looked to me like the adjacent dock is right on the property line.
The adjacent lock is either got a zero setback or it is encroaching.
Alright.
It is very, very.
That's the one to the east, you're saying?
That is the one to the west.
To the west.
The, the one to the east is angled.
The property line technically goes here, right?
The, the dock on the eastern side is also angled in the same direction and is therefore approaching on the property further east. So.
Because it's like so much dock.
There is a lot of dock along here. Many of them are approaching on other properties. They should be contained within the boundaries of projection of their lot lines and.
Because you can see here, like, there's a, like, there's a perpendicular slip, and you would have to like drive your boat on the adjacent property definitely to get it in there because the edge of the slip is.
So, so that is, that is the concern. With a zero setback, in order for a boat to come around into, into this boat port, they will have to go in front of the property to the east and turn into it. Which, in this instance, because their dock is angled in a different direction, there is space to do that, but it, it does have an impact on the neighboring property. If, if the dock is located further north, closer to the house and and the, the port, oh, goodness, dock, boat port is facing east. If the boat port is at the very end of the peninsula facing south, then it does not need to encroach on anyone's water space to get into it. However, if it was located in that site, it would be directly in front of the neighboring property on.
So are we going to be requiring the neighbor to tear down part of?
We, yeah.
Okay.
I have a question. How wide an easement does the city require?
The, the city has suggested that if the setback is reduced to 1.5, we would take the 1.5 easement that we have. But if we can, even if we take that 1.5-meter easement and the house is set back 2.5 meters, that just gives us a little bit more wiggle room if you have equipment going in there that we do not damage. That just gives us a little bit more wiggle room if you have equipment going in there that we do not damage.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
I wish there was a clearer drawing of the intention of where that houseboat or that boathouse is going to be placed.
Can I drop one off? Can I drop one off tomorrow?
So. The the public meeting and the decision was to be made tonight. And depending on, you know, the committee's decision and what they're going to hear from the. From the public, they do have the option of approving, refusing or deferring this application. So why don't we hear from the public now? And and then let the committee discuss. What they would like to do.
Okay, one quick question then. I mean, I'm in Kuwait and if you guys. Would you accept me to come there and 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 present this right now and just show what our intentions are?
So.
Just for clarity, it's I mean, I can be there in fifteen minutes if that made a difference.
So there'll be a couple of things in play here. We have people who are wishing to speak, so. If you were to do that, then you might not hear what they had to say. And then the committee also has to make a decision on whether or not you will allow this leeway for this to happen tonight. And if it if it helps at all.
I mean, I'm just trying to offer clarity and and show flexibility here. So whatever, whatever you decide.
So how do you feel, committee? Do you feel that the drawing now is?
I.
I I mean, I I can't understand this.
Right.
I need some clarity. On boathouse placement.
Okay, then I would propose that we just move this file to the end of the meeting, like pause this file where we are now. Move it to the end of the meeting, go through the other cases. And then pick it back up. And if he's arrived by then. And we can. Scan and upload to the video, the photo, so that the public can.
Yeah.
You guys are at the at the city, city, city office?
No, we're at the operation center.
Okay, so which door can I use to to get in there?
Oh, so just I just want to hear from the rest of the committee. Are we in favor of tabling us till the end of the meeting then? And coming back to it? Yes, okay. All right, so for members of the of the public. We we respectfully request that you are patient with us so that we can hear this application tonight. There are a couple of other applications that we'll we have to hear. But hopefully then by that time. We'll have the clarity of the new drawing. And then we will certainly come back and we will have had a chance to have a look at it. We will share that with you through through our Zoom capabilities, right?
The drawings?
Yeah, or if Mr. Steniski can simply just email it to us, we can put it on screen.
That would work. That would work better. Can you do that, Mr. Steniski?
I can certainly try. What email am I sending it to?
M S H A W at Canora dot C A.
Sorry, what is that?
M S H A W. M Shaw at Canora dot C A.
Okay, so does that mean just email it to you and not come down there?
Right, certainly, that's an option, yeah.
Okay, I will try and get that right now.
Okay, thank you. So we're just going to pause on.
Scan on your phone takes really good pictures. And converts it to PDF.
So we're just going to pause this application six thirty five. And thank you, everybody, for your patience on this one. Alright, so we have an application then. For land division. D ten twenty four oh two. Hilli Lake Construction. Is there somebody who is? Present who wants to speak to this?
I'm here.
And you are?
Scott Gammage.
Oh, Scott Gammage, okay, I can't see him anywhere. All right, so Mr. Gammage, would you like to just give us an overview of what you're asking for, please?
I'm trying to subdivide a property that I have. On the Hilli Lake Road, not on the lakeside, but. On the backside of Hilli Lake. Five lots, one has my shop on it, and the other four. Are severed as rural lots.
Alright, so we'll get Ms. Pocailo to. Go over the planning report for us then.
Thank you, ma'am, Joan. This is an application for consent to sever an existing hundred ninety seven point seven acre eighty hectare. Property creating four new residential lots. And a ninety five acre thirty eight point four three hectare residual lot. The subject property, as the applicant said, is located on the east side of Hilli Lake Road. It is tree covered with a swampy area that situated back from the road. Hydro easement five eight six three six crosses the northern portion of the property. The transmission line creates a natural division. There appears to be a gravel extraction site. And existing what I thought was a residence, but Mr. Gammage has indicated is a shop. On the southern part of the property. Adjacent properties include lakefront rural residential lots on the west side of Hilli Lake Road. And large rural properties to the north and east. Gravel extraction activities are located to the south and southeast of the property. An abandoned mine site is identified approximately nine hundred meters from the closest proposed lot. There is an existing residence and evidence of gravel extraction activity on the residual gap. The application is generally consistent with the provincial policy statement. As well as the City of Canora official plan. Residential development in rural area is restricted to single detached dwellings on relatively large lots serviced by private water and sewer. Development proposals are limited in scale and not detract from the planned role and function of the settlement area. They are to preserve the rural character and scenic quality of the rural landscape, avoiding densities more appropriate found in the settlement area. And as we've said, these are. The proposed lots are quite large. There's a zoning chart. Further in on page four that indicates the lot sizes. The residual parcel is over thirty eight hectares. The other lots are thirteen point one six hectares, eleven point zero two, eleven point five three, and the smallest. Property being that which is north of the hydro transmission line is six point eight eight hectares. There are abandoned mine hazard sites identified on figure two. Two sites such sites are identified nearby properties. One is four hundred meters northwest of proposed lot four, and the second is. Four hundred and sixteen meters southeast of the residual parcel. The city requires applicants for proposed development within thousand meters of an abandoned mine hazards. Simple to consult with the Ministry of Northern Development and Mines regarding the nature of the hazard. I just want to point out that this was done and Mr. Gammage provided comments provided from the Ministry of Mines, indicating that they have no concerns with the settlements. Policy eight eleven four requires that when one or more new building lots are created, the city shall receive the cash equivalent to five percent of the land based on current. Value assessment for part dedication. Policy six point one H. Indicates that the extended municipal services beyond the settlement area may be expanded with an official plan amendment if there is evidence to reconquer. We're not asking to do that here. It goes on to say there shall be no new development on Hilli Lake. In this particular instance, the proposed lots are all backshore lots. They are not fronting onto the lake itself. So is my opinion that that. Policy does not apply. Lot policy six point two E goes on to say that lot sizes, soil and groundwater conditions shall be suitable for the proposed. Sewage and water supply. Sewer and water services shall obtain any required permits and approval. The onsite sewage is. Proposed, so as a requirement. As a condition of subdivision approval, it would be presumed to include. Requirement of permit from the Northwest Health Unit. The vote's consent was circulated for comment. To. City departments and outside agencies on February twenty seventh, twenty twenty four. Ministry of Mines, as I said. My apologies. Spitted comments of no concern. I'm just turning this on. And no other comments were received. The circulation was also circulated to the public in accordance with section thirty thirty three of the Planning Act. It was circulated to property owners within sixty meters of the subject property and notice was posted on the subject property. As of the date of this report, no public comments have been received. The proposed severance will create four new rural properties that range in size from six point eight hectares to thirteen point six hectares and lead to thirty eight. Point four hectare residual parcel. The application is supported by the policies of the provincial policy statement. And the official plan by providing much needed lots for residential development. All proposed lots comply with zoning regulations. The proposed backshore lots are not immediately adjacent to the lake. Policy six point one H is often not applicable. The proposed lots are generously sized for residential development, making them suitable for onsite water and wastewater management. Proof of permit for wastewater management will be required from the Northwest Health Unit. Prior to the issue of building permits, but it could also be required as a condition of subdivision approval. The residual parcel includes evidence of a gravel extraction operation. To my knowledge, no new development is proposed on this site. If the existing building was a shop and not a dwelling, maybe it is possible, but a home would also be located here. And I've already discussed that the abandoned mine sites. There is no concerns raised by the Ministry of Mines. The application D ten twenty four oh two for consent for lots average on a property located at an unaddressed. Property on Hilli Lake Road. Legally described as PIN four two one seven seven dash zero three zero four, City of Canora. It is recommended that it be approved and provisional consent be granted, subject to the following conditions. The original executed transfer deed of land. Form, a duplicate original and one photocopy for city records be provided for each parcel. A schedule to the transfer deed of land form. On which is set the entire legal description of the pins in question. And containing the names of parties indicated on page one of the transfer deed of land form to be provided for each parcel. That approved permits are received from the Northwestern Health Unit for private servicing. That the cash equivalent to five percent of the land, based on current value assessment, be provided as required of the City of Canora official plan policy. Eight one one dash four E. The three original copies and one PDF copy of the reference plan of survey bearing the Land Registry Office registration number and signatures. As evidence of deposit therein and illustrating. Then. The parts to which consent approval relates. Which must show the general, the same area and dimensions as the sketch forming part of the application be provided. That the payment of any outstanding taxes, including penalties and interest. And any local improvement charges, if applicable, shall be paid to the City of Canora. That an application for an entrance permit for each lot is received and approved by the City of Canora. And that prior to endorsement of deeds, the Secretary Treasurer shall receive a letter from the owner. Or the owner's agent solicitor confirming that conditions one through seven have been fulfilled. Clearance from the City of Canora and external agencies as required would be included. All costs associated with surveys, legal fees, and matters related to the application are the responsibility of the developer.
Thank you. So. Did I hear? I don't know if I didn't hear this. Number four condition that the reference plan of survey indicates right of way for Hilli Lake. Do you have that on there? To be transferred to the City of Canora?
My apologies, I printed this off of the chair point, and it was not the.
So just a couple of more conditions that Mr. Gammage.
The two additional conditions that the reference plan of survey indicates that the right of way for Hilli Lake Road. Is to be transferred to the City of Canora. The width of the right of way shall replicate the budding spout and road on plan M six three four Canora. And. An additional condition that the owner developer agrees to grant such easements as may be required. For utility purposes. And show such easements on the reference plan or reg transfer register such easements as required on the lots created.
So, Mr. Gammage, do you have any questions or comments about the conditions or the rest of the staff report?
No, I don't have any problem with that.
Okay, all right. So, committee, anybody have any questions? Okay. Is there anybody who is present who wishes to speak for or against this application? No? Nobody is? Oh, all right, thank you. So any discussion? Can I go mover please for the approval of this application? Eric Font seconded by Andrea. And no more comments or questions or discussion? No? All right, we'll vote on that then, please. Show of hands for approval. Thank you, and that's carried. Thank you, Mr. Gammage. You've received provisional approval here this evening. It will be subject to a twenty day appeal period. There are appeal limitations on that. And those will be included in the notice of the decision, which I will circulate tomorrow. The appeal period will be up on April tenth, twenty twenty four. And you will have two years from today's date to complete all of those conditions as outlined within the planning report. Should you have any questions, Mr. Gammage, we can certainly have a conversation after tonight's meeting.
I appreciate it. Thanks very much for your help.
Thank you. So do we have the information yet? No, okay, so we'll just carry on then. There is a second application for land division D ten twenty four oh three Berenger. Is there somebody here who wishes to speak to this application? No? Yes? Hi. Does anybody wish to?
Oh, sorry, hello.
Thank you.
It's Rowena Berenger, and. I'm here to request that you approve. Realigning the lot boundary between twenty Bay Ridge Road and fourteen Bay Ridge Road. Inadvertently. The corner of our garage and the corner of the deck. Were built on the adjoining property of twenty Bay Ridge Road. And we are requesting that we can. Sort out this problem and realign the lot boundary.
Right, thank you. So Janice, would you like to just go over the planning report then, please?
Absolutely, thank you. This one is is pretty straightforward. It's an application for consent to realign a lot boundary between twenty Bay Ridge Road and fourteen Bay Ridge Road. To address an encroaching accessory structure and deck. The severed portion of land from twenty Bay Ridge Road is to be legally consolidated with. The land at fourteen Bay Ridge Road, no new lots will be created. the land at fourteen Bay Ridge Road. No new lots will be created. The subject properties are are located on the north side of Bay Ridge Road, adjacent to Golf Course Bay on Lake of the Woods. Both lots are developed with existing dwellings and accessory structures. At present, the eaves of the garage as well as a deck located on fourteen Bay Ridge Road approach onto the neighboring property. Uh the subject land as well as adjacent properties are waterfront residential lots. This is an established area serviced by municipal sewer and water. The proposed subdivision is consistent with both the provincial policy statement and the City of Canora official plan. The policies listed in the report for the official plan that are impacted by this application, existing uses shall be preserved and protected from incompatible uses. Residential development shall be encouraged through plans of subdivision. In terms of the zoning bylaw, both properties are located in the R one residential first density zone. Single detached dwellings and accessory structures are permitted uses in this zone. The minimum requirements for lot frontage is fifteen meters, lot area four hundred and fifty meters squared and side yards for a one-story structure is one point five meters. The proposed um lot boundary is has yet to be surveyed, but it is my understanding that it is to be a a minimum amount required by the zoning by law to bring the existing buildings into compliance. Both of these lots are quite large. Uh they have frontage in the neighborhood of thirty-six, thirty to thirty-six meters wide, so double the minimum requirement. Both the uh proposed lot areas are over twenty-five hundred meters squared, so they are much larger than the four hundred and fifty meters where there is definitely room to adjust this property boundary without putting either of the uh putting lot twenty of Bay Ridge Road out of compliance with the zoning bylaw. The application was circulated to city departments and outside agencies. The Ministry of Natural Resources commented with no concerns, as did Synergy North. There were no concerns raised by city departments. The notice was circulated to the public in accordance with section fifty-three of the Planning Act. Wherewise, circulated to property owners within sixty meters of the subject property. The notice was posted on the subject property and notice was provided to persons and public bodies as prescribed. As of the date of this report, no public comments have been received. The proposed severance will realign the property boundary between two lots and existing residential area lots in this area typically larger than the minimum requirements of the zoning by law. The proposed severance and parcel consolidation will not significantly alter the character of the neighborhood. This is consistent with both the provincial policy statement and the City of Canora official plan. It is therefore recommended that application D ten twenty four oh three for consent for lots average of Bay Ridge Road be approved and provisional consent be granted, subject to the following. The original executed transfer deed of land form, a duplicate original and one photocopy for city records be provided for each parcel. A schedule to the transfer deed of land form on which it is set out the entire legal description of the pins in question and containing the names of the parties indicated on page one of the transfer deed of land or to be provided for each parcel. That the lands be transferred for lot addition be surveyed and described on the reference plan and that a draft be provided to the planning department for preapproval. That written confirmation from a land surveyor licensed to practice in the province of Ontario that the subdivision as proposed will not create existing buildings or structures to be out of compliance with the existing zoning bylaw specifically. Um confirmation must be given that required side yards, frontage, and site areas are maintained. Uh that the newly lot created lot be consolidated on title with the adjacent lot identified as fourteen Bay Ridge Road. And that three original copies and one PDF copy of the reference plan of survey bearing the Land Registry Office registration number and signatures as evidence of deposit therein and illustrating the parts to which the consent approval relates. Which must show in general the same area and dimensions as the sketch forming part of this application be provided. That the payment of any outstanding taxes, including penalties and interest in interest and any local improvement charges, if applicable, shall be paid to the City of Canora. That prior to endorsement of the deeds, the Secretary Treasurer shall receive a letter from the owner or owner's agent solicitor confirming that conditions one through six have been fulfilled. Clearance from the City of Canora and external agencies as required are to be included and that all costs associated with survey, legal fees, and matters related to the application are the responsibility of the developer applicants.
Um so, Mrs. Berenger, uh do you have any comments or questions about those conditions?
No, that's um that's fine.
Thank you. Committee members, do you have any comments or questions? No, okay. Is there anybody in the public who wishes to speak for or against this application? No? All right, thank you. Uh so, do I have a mover for the approval of this application? Robert and a seconder. Renee, any comments or questions or discussion? All right, uh we'll move uh we'll vote on that then. Um everybody who agrees. Put up your hand. Thank you. All right, so that's carried.
Thank you, Ms. Berenger, for being with us here this evening. You have received provisional approval on the application for law addition. It is subject to a twenty-day appeal period. There are appeal limitations on that, so only the minister-assigned person or the applicant can appeal. I will send notice of this decision out tomorrow, and should you have any questions, please feel free to get a hold of our department.
Thank you. Thanks for your consideration. Thank you. Good night.
Okay, I have for soup communication. You do? Okay. So, yeah, so we're just um getting the um submission here, the drawings.
Does that help explain it a little bit better?
It does. And can you screen share so that the? Thank you. So, um Melissa's going to screen share so that the members of the public can have a look at this as well.
Yeah, nothing's to scale. I mean, I put it on the on the drawing we have for the lot, but nothing's to scale. It was just cut big enough so we could identify the buildings at play and where the proposed uh structure would be.
Okay, I see the why that's so confusing. If this is Lake of the Woods, then it's on the west side, but it's on the lake east line. Oh, and then this is the Pelicans, where they existing boat house.
That's the one on the left-hand side. When you've got this, when you're looking south.
Right, I was like, I just.
The sticky, the sticky notes aren't upside down.
No, they're not. That's right. We're looking south. We're not looking north and south. We're looking as if we're from the road and we're towards the lake.
Yeah, the sticky notes are right. They're not upside down.
Are we gonna, uh are we gonna be privy to see this? Like, we can't see this yet.
Yeah, we're just trying. So, patience and and we'll get that for you.
Okay.
So, this is north. That's.
That's right.
That's correct orientation.
We're just getting oriented here.
Yeah, it's it's a challenging lot, and the way it's sitting, it's hard to get it just right.
So, Janice, this boat house seems to be further south.
This this boat house is where I thought it was originally.
Oh, is it?
Okay, so how to put it in a word? Okay, remember, so we'd lost everybody. I didn't know he knew that.
And that location is not affecting anybody's view or turn to the lake.
You are, so just because it's because we're screen sharing on here, I think. Okay, so we can't see any members of the public right now. Um we are all just looking at the the um drawing that we've been given now. And uh so now I'm going to go to questions from the committee again. And then um we'll go to questions or comments uh from the public. All right, so comments um from the committee. Does anybody have any questions or comments about this? First of all, should we do it one at a time? How is everybody feeling about the one point five meters for the residence?
Yes, I think you should have a public hearing before you discuss.
Okay.
Like, you can ask questions, but you should have.
So, questions or comments about the whole application then?
So, the boathouse that I see um at the south end of the property, it's got, it's the zero easterly side yard, basically, you draw across the water to the other lot. That, okay, I understand that now.
Correct, because if we don't go to that side, then that puts us way more out front. And it blocks Mr. Livingston, so we're trying to stay, get that over as much as we can. Because if we go out further to get the clearance to build the boathouse, we're way out in front of his place.
All right, so you're not, you're not blocking the Livingston's view at all then with this proposed boathouse location?
Well.
Really, his neighbor is the open water.
Okay, so.
I'm not sure. I mean, if you can look out his window, I guess, and he sees the boathouse, he's gonna say we're blocking his view, but um. I mean, he's built above it. He'll see.
Anything further? Okay, Karen?
No, I think I I understand now.
Andrea?
And then just.
Oh, sorry.
Well, sorry, for clarity, not not so much about the boathouse, but I just want to clarify what the city is asking about store and sewer easement. Um so, they're requesting on one side that they reduce to one point five meters, but are you still maintaining that you wanted two point five on the other side of the?
Well, and on the east side, right. It will allow us more space between the two houses to access that existing.
And this, this Livingston house is like, the elevation of it is different than where this house would be to the river.
Anything else, Karen?
Just a clarity again, so the uh the zero um the zero point zero meters is for the water portion only, but the land would be two point five on the east side? Yes, okay. Because it is a boathouse, it would be four point five on the west, on the west side, but zero on the east side. Okay.
Okay, so my only comment is, I have a question. Is it a boat port or a boathouse?
I guess boathouse.
Okay, so it's got walls then all around. I my question is, um are you, you you, you know, in order to stay within your own property, you wouldn't be able to dock on that east side of that building?
So, sure. Yeah, it it it's to build a structure to basically protect the boat, so that if, when it's off the water, it can be up. I don't know if it'll have walls or not, like, until we actually see what we can build here, nothing's sort of written in stone. We're still trying to be able to get to planning what we can do there.
Okay. All right. Okay, so um I think there are some members of the public who uh wish to speak to this application. Who um should we hear from first? Do you want to go in order? Where's your list? Thank you, my list is under here. All right, uh so, Mr. Pelican, um would you like to speak to this application?
Uh yes, I sure would. Thanks for letting me speak.
Did you get a chance to have a look, sorry, of the at the drawing?
I did, but it's a little bit incomplete, because if you draw it further, uh it doesn't show where the Livingston's is encroaching. Like, going toward the east a little bit across that property line. If you show the extended line over the water, it doesn't show me on that what I was shown there.
Right.
So, I'm not really clear on how that works, but that's okay. On the application that I saw, they're asking for either a dock or a lift. I saw nothing to do with a boathouse. So, I'm a little bit confused that we're even talking about a boathouse.
Well, a boathouse, would you consider a boathouse, uh four posts and a roof?
No, that's a boat port.
Well, that's what we're asking for, Dave.
Okay, so, Mr. Stavnetsky, that's why I had asked about, for some clarification on whether or not it was a boathouse or a boat port.
Well, that's, I guess it's my definition, I like um it it won't have walls. What we're trying to get is a roof just to protect the boat on the lift. So, I guess I always call it a boathouse. I get my terminology's off. I apologize.
That's okay. All right, so, Mr. Pelican, um does that clarify things for you?
Well, yeah, uh to a certain extent, but I wish that was, you know, set up to begin with, right? And we should have been clarified on that. A lift is one thing. A dock is one thing, a boathouse is something else, but yes, he has clarified. It should still be on that application properly to start with.
Okay, so, um Ms. Hale's going to speak to them.
Uh a boat, all permitted uses in the R one zone are permitted. He's not asking for uh variance to the proposed use. He's asked for variance to the side yard, so any of those proposed uses could be constructed on this site. The, if he comes in for a building permit for a boathouse or a dock port, if it is a permitted use, then he would be permitted to do it. This variance could be written very specifically that and that the variance requested could be only for a certain type of structure and not the whole gamut. But right now, any permitted docking boat port uh boathouse, that those are still permitted on this property.
Thank you.
Okay.
Well, Mr. Pelican, do you understand that then?
I do.
Okay. So, do you have anything else you'd like to say or?
Yeah, actually, there is uh some things I'd like to say. Um when we think of these bylaws and why they're put in place, you know, they're kind of to prevent people from building too large for the property. So, when they're asking for, if we were to take the the side light, the side yard out of it, he can build a certain size of home. In in this particular case, um if we go back to when I was building in nineteen ninety-seven, we had a sixty-six-foot setback from the high-water mark. Now, in two thousand fifteen, there was an amendment made, and it was reduced to twenty-five foot from the high-water mark. So, already, he's able to build almost twice the size of home that I'm able to build without the setback change. Right? So, so it kind of makes me wonder, when they're making all these changes, you're penalizing one and you're 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 giving grace to someone else. Now, if this had not. Now, if this had not, this this bylaw in two thousand fifteen had not happened, then he would be able to build a very tiny home, which he probably wouldn't be doing. Then he might be asking for forgiveness on the side. But because that front yard is changed by forty something feet, it's incredible the difference that that makes. So anyway, um. It just, like when I'm hearing these discussions about all this, I often wonder why the bylaw was put in place to begin with. Because you can put an application in to get them reduced, right? So I guess that's my point, is I'm just trying to make, he's able to build quite a large home as it is. And he still wants more. So I understand the way the the setup is for the the storm sewer, I understand that two point five being kept there, that makes total sense to me. For upkeep on that storm sewer, and I do understand on the other side, because it's not encroaching on Les's home or anything, it's it's, you know, it's basically grass and stuff, so so that kind of makes sense to me, I feel better about that move. Now, when we get down to the water. Um. I guess, almost to me, sometimes there's properties that shouldn't be, you just shouldn't be able to build stuff on the water because of the location of it, and depending on how the lines project out, it doesn't lend itself properly for that. This may be one of those cases, that's not my decision, that's your decision to make. Um, I certainly understand what he's saying on the side yard, sticking it closer to the east. That certainly keeps everybody in check, it's it's, you know, he's he's doing the best he can in that regard. And it's not encroaching on the last's property as well. You know, when we start talking about the way these boathouses are angled, you know, across the properties, I've never really understood why that happens, but it happens quite a bit over the years. A lot of the boathouses and dock structures don't seem to follow the lot lines that are projected. They always seem to stick to one side to start, and then they go across, I'm not sure if that's because of prevailing winds, or I'm not really sure what that reason is. Now, in respect to our property, when when we bought our piece of property, the DILCs had bought, which is neighbors to the east, they had bought that property a couple of years previous. That whole dock and boathouse structure was there long before we were there, that's from the old Atchison property and Atkinson property. And there was a bunch of different buildings on that property, so when they subdivided those properties, that's what was there. It's not something that we built there, we, none of us have built that, that was there to begin with. So I guess what I'm trying to get at by that is, because things were the way they were in the past, it doesn't mean we should allow them to continue, and it seems to me that we're 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 really cramming something in that almost shouldn't be there. So unfortunate that it's it's Mr. Kabalka's property that this is that this is happening to, I wouldn't want that to be happening to anyone. But it 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 lends some thought as to as to where we're going with this, is what I'm getting at.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else uh from the public wish to speak? Um, I have Mr. Livingston, did you want to speak to this?
Yes, can you uh hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Okay, I guess uh first comment here is uh my photo number one. Has the has the committee looked at this?
Your photo number one?
In his honor.
So I notice. No, I haven't seen that.
Those were circulated to today.
Oh, I'm messing with that, okay, good. Okay, anybody else in there?
I did.
All right. So photo number one is this photo. And if anybody has their homes and whatever, then it needs maybe have a little advantage, I can do that.
The aerial shot?
Uh, photo one, no, it's the.
Les, they're just looking at your photo.
Yeah, it's an aerial shot.
Yes.
Or drone or something.
It's a good perspective.
Okay, so we're looking at the aerial photo number one, what comments did you have about that, Mr. Livingston?
I've tried to make it uh clear where the side yard property lines are. See where Dave and I walked, our footprints, where it marks the um east side of the applicant's property, and you know, Dave is on the east of that. Then the red uh line shows our property line on the west. So it's a very, very difficult thing to build a dock in here, I don't for the life of me understand how this is really gonna happen. For one thing, if he's putting the dock way out on the point, how does he get access to it?
Okay, uh, do you have any other? Um, so do you have any other comments then, Mr. Livingston, and maybe we can speak with uh Mr. Kabalka about that question after, if you have anything else?
Uh, yes, I I do.
Okay.
Hey, another question I have is, okay, the walkway to the dock, how far away from the house uh is the dock allowed to be? Are there any requirements on that? And what size for the deck, like and does, what includes walkways, what includes floaters? Because there are maximum sizes for decks. And this illustration that Bart just made, I mean, gives us no information about actual size of the new um dock boat lift. And if they do get more information on what they want to do, when do we get input on the design of this new structure? Because how can we entertain an application like this when there is no detail? And and one further note about the M and R not having any cons uh concerns, how can he even make a comment when they haven't seen any plan from the dock or the boat lift? It's just this lack of information is the main problem here.
Okay, so I'm going to get Ms. Bakayle to speak to um the the setback on um on the west side then would be four point five meters, is that correct?
That's correct.
Right, so um the request is for zero meters on the east side, so that would be on uh the Pellican side. And still four point five meters on the west side, which would be your side. So regardless of what structure is built, it would need to be four point five meters from that extension of the lot line. Or in this case, maybe even some land on there. So does that help you a little bit?
Oh, I understand, but it doesn't really tell me where it's gonna be located. Is it right on the point, like, I mean, without having, why can't they supply something just like this, just like an aerial? Put the, put the structure right in there, where is it? That is not unreasonable to request.
Okay. Um.
You can even use my illustration.
Okay, so um, Mr. Livingston, I'm just going to quickly ask Mr. Kabalka um if he has any idea of how they are going to access that, and then we're just going to leave it at that, and then see if anybody else wishes to speak to this, okay? So Mr. Kabalka, um, do you have any ideas about your design?
Yes, uh approximately six foot walkway from the boat. No, not boathouse, but boat, the boat loop, just the roof, a walkway to the land where the house would be built. And explaining where the boathouse, Bart just finished showing you the drawings where the boathouse is. I think we're um, the variance that we're asking for is not out of line at all. And we do have the right to build that boat lift in the deeper water. It could be closer to the house, away from Mr. Livingston's dock, but I don't know, uh, there's not enough depth of water. We have no choice but going all the way to that point. So that clarifies that there's a walkway to go with piles, I piled the piping uh back to the house on shore. And I don't, I don't see any of this reasonable, I was never asked to drawings, I was just asking for minor variances, that's all.
And that's fine, Mr. Kabalka, uh we appreciate the clarification. I'm going to go on and ask if Matt Wilkie has any comments or questions about this application?
Uh, no further comments, thank you.
Okay, thank you, um, Mr. Chapman? No, um, is there anybody else who wishes to speak to this application?
Well, this is Les, I have further questions.
Oh, sorry, okay.
Okay, so uh what is the length of the walkway?
So um I think that Mr. Kabalka just answered that he would be going along the shoreline to the house. So that dimension, you know, um, I I we can't speak to that right now, but that would be something that would be part of a building impairment application.
And he mentioned that the walkway would be anchored partially on the land, and I guess with uh piles in the water. So then, is the walkway actually considered part of the surface area of the deck? Because there is a maximum size for this, and I understand walkways are part of that, the whole calculation, and I can't see how that's going to work.
Ms. Bakayle?
I mean, there's a lot of detail required here.
Okay, so Mr. Kabalka, we're just going to answer in generalities right at the moment. I am sure that what's going to happen is when the application goes to the building permit stage, then there there, if there's no um, you know, if if everything complies with the zoning bylaw, the permit will be issued. If not, then there might be some negotiation or some change in plans, or they might have to come back. Would that be?
That's correct, when, when uh the the boathouse, and if it's a raised walkway that is more like a shoreline structure or a deck, there are maximum sizes, so if a building permit is applied for, and it exceeds the maximum required amount permitted under the zoning bylaw, then the additional zoning variances would be required, but right now, we don't have information about a walkway, it's not something that's being contemplated at that degree, if it is landscaping, that it's quite a bit different than if it is a deck or elevated walkway, so we would have to have those details in order to make comment on, on the walkway. Right now, it's not part of this application, this application is for a dock boat port and side yards for that.
Thank you.
Hey, one further thing.
Okay.
Is the city going to be approving the actual dock structure, the size and all that, or is that a call for M and R?
A building permit?
It is a building permit, uh the M and R has regulations, if it is a pipe dock, well, for for the M and R to intervene, it would need to be over eighteen square meters of contact to the um ground under the water. Generally speaking, these sorts of structures are pipe docks, which have very limited contact to the ground and the water, and so they fall outside of the M and R's scope of interest.
So you mean eighteen meet square meters of actual metal touching the ground, so in each case, each pile would be much less than that, correct?
That's right.
Right.
So if it was a crib dock, you would very quickly get to your eighteen meters, if it is a pipe dock, there's a lot of docking without covering eighteen meters of lake bottom.
Mr. Livingston?
Yes, I understand everything about the dimensions of the of the pipes, you can put a lot of pipes in eighteen square feet. But what about the size for the deck, there are new limitations on that, so, you know, does anyone know that? And again, back to my question, is the walkway, when it's anchored to piles, is it considered part of the dock structure in terms of square footage?
It would be considered through the building permit process, and whether what is being proposed complies with the zoning bylaw or not. If it does not, then we would have to come back back to through this process. If it does, then the building permits could potentially be issued.
How do we have access to this uh building permit application, are we granted that uh as a neighbor prior to commencement of construction?
No, you are not.
Um. Pardon me?
No, you are not, it is, the applicant submits their drawings, we do an internal review, we evaluate it against the zoning bylaw, and if it complies, then we have, then it is a permitted, it is permitted, and then it would go through um, the building itself would be reviewed for compliance with the building code. So we do do a zoning check, we check to make sure that what is being proposed complies with the zoning bylaw. If it does, then like any other development, your your home, your deck, those sorts of things, if it complies with the zoning bylaw, your neighbors do not get to comment on.
Could I chime in here for one second, please, Dave Pellican?
Uh, we'll just finish with Mr. Livingston, please, Mr. Pellican.
Okay.
My comment is, I've asked questions and I've received no answers, so I guess we have to see what comes.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, Mr. Pellican, you wanted to ask another question?
Yes, I guess, I guess just to clarify what Les has said and what what Al has said. So we're talking about a six to eight foot walkway, I think he said six foot. But coming from the shore all the way out to the boathouse is like quite a stretch, like it's gotta be, it's gotta be sixty, eighty feet of a walkway to get to that structure on the end of that dock. So you're saying that you're going to allow, if you take the zero yards or the zero meters from the four point five to the zero, you're gonna allow him to build some kind of a walkway structure leading all the way to that boathouse along that shoreline? With with zero side yard?
No.
No, the zero side yard is on your side. The, right, so um the the shoreline structure would be on their shore, which is, you know, sort of in the middle of their lot, so more towards the west, where the northwest corner of the boathouse or the boat port would meet.
That's not what I saw in that picture, that picture shows that if you project the the easterly line, which is a button to mine, Barb's boat port, or whatever that is, shows it it's as far east as possible along that line. And I think it was Tara Recubi that made the the comment that you wouldn't be able to park your boats on the east side of that. Right? So, like, it 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 doesn't make sense to me that we, if we follow that projected line there on the eastern side, that we would allow west of that easterly line, a six foot walkway to come all the way from the shore, all the way to that boat port, and then a boat port being built.
Okay, Ms. Makay, Makayla is going to speak to that.
So what you, what you're describing is not a pathway on land, it is a dock running along the eastern property boundary from where the house is located, all the way out to this boathouse. And that.
That's correct.
That would not comply with the zoning bylaw.
Okay, good, that's, I just wanted to have clarification on that, because what Al was saying. Okay, good. That's, I just wanted to have clarification on that because what Al was saying is that there was going to be pipes and a six foot walkway built from the shore to the boat port. So that's what I took. And I, I just can't understand why that would be allowed when he's got that whole slippery property, although it may be difficult. He could certainly go ahead and build on his property when, when he doesn't require any restrictions. Like he doesn't have to have any, any bylaw, uh, you know, relaxing or nothing. So I just, I'm glad that we, we clarified that.
We, the um, the variance, the committee site could make it very clear that it is only for the boat port structure, not for any approaches and docks.
Yeah. Perfect.
Mr. Cabalca could comment. My understanding of what he said was that the path would be on land, over, overland.
That's not what I understood, but Al, can you chime in there?
Mr. Cabalca, can you clarify is the shoreline, shoreline walkway?
The shoreline walkway, it's wherever is going to be the easiest way to construct it. And my understanding that the zero clearance was not only for the boat port. It was all the way, whatever water. But that's fine. Uh, if that's what you decide to do, you decide to do it. Whatever, whatever conditions we're going to get in there, the boat port is important. And, and the walkway can be built on closer onto land. It may not even be on water. I really don't know till the construction starts or gets close to it to see what area we can really. I need this meeting to get closer to applying and carrying on with construction or a building permit.
Okay, so just so you understand that the committee tonight is considering um, the zero law line for the boat port only. So no other um marine structures, uh, that's only for the, the boat port, okay?
Okay, so we might, we might have to.
When you, yeah, when you do your plans, um, and uh you'll then speak with staff and make sure that you're um compliant with the zoning bylaw and uh, and, and, you know, it might work out fine without you having to come back. But for now, that's what this committee is, is uh going to be deliberating on, and that's what the notice included uh that went to the public as well. Okay? So um, all right, I'm just going to go on. Um, is Donald Wilson, did you wish to speak to this?
Please, and, and thanks for recognizing me. Uh, I appreciate the opportunity to represent uh Lakeview Villas. And thanks for building that, Al. Um, I, I'm an owner of one of the condos that's identified in your drawing on uh page one of the staff report. It's the section of R threes above the OS and of course the dock that's underneath it that holds fourteen slips. Uh, as a member of the board, uh, my comments are generally representative of the fourteen owners of Lakeview Villas. And the, the major is that we have a problem with the zero clearance on the waterfront. And the minor is the building side yard reduction. I'll try to uh be swift with uh my notes here. Uh, eliminating the side clearance on uh frontage entirely. It's not a minor variance and it prevents uh, pretty sorry, it uh presents multiple uh issues to the adjacent properties. Uh, our observation is particularly important when it involves a dock because boats require at least a couple of meters and now uh quite a few boats need three meters of width. And approval may deny the use by the neighboring uh property frontage. Mostly important to these two neighbors, but in the future, we're looking at uh this creating potential dangerous precedent for other planning applications. And uh our point in this is mostly what happens if the planning office gets other applications? And the applicant, applicants just say you approved it for them, so why would this be a, a problem for us in the future? But our most immediate concern on that dock section is that the app, if the application was approved and a neighbor of ours was to make a similar application and be successful with it. It could cause the dock to be impossible to use on one side or the other. And I was writing a note for myself and I thought, if you've got zero clearance on one side of that boathouse, uh, what happens when a future owner of that boathouse, uh, when, when the, the applicant has sold that property starts part, parking their boat on the other side or maybe starts, uh, uh, you know, it just becomes some kind of conflict point. So I, I'm thinking this is setting a particularly difficult precedent. As far as the building side yard reduction goes, uh, the configuration looks like it would be uncharacteristic and incompatible with uh the neighborhood, but again, a minor for us. It's just, it's not going to look the same. I want to be sensitive to that as well because I've got a piece of property uh just uh north of Rod Lamb and on seventeen that I'm going to be developing and I'm going to be looking for the potentially some variances there as well, but I, I, I see that this creates a high potential for encroachment in, in both areas. And I think I can say on behalf of Lakeview Villas, uh, we all have the same similar sort of uh represent uh representative view of what this could cause. So again, not directly uh on this application, but potentially indirectly as a function of approval of the application.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak for or against this application? Okay, so now what happens is the committee will deliberate. Um, and so the public, unless you're invited, unless we have a question for the applicant generally, um, then we ask you please just to listen and um, and then you'll hear what we are talking about and you'll hear what the decision is. All right. Questions or comments? Robert?
No, I, I, I mean, I, I, I understand the concerns, but I also understand what's before us. And that's just in terms of looking at the, the variances. What, what the dock looks like, what the boat port looks like, what the walkway looks like. All those things are out of our purview. Right? So I would have concerns on that if it wasn't, uh, you know, if you didn't have to apply for building permit and have had to meet all those standards. But um beyond that, it's a really weird shaped property. I don't know how else you could put a dock or a boat port um on the lake. And I, um, and the side variances for the, for the property, maintaining the two point five meters on one side and changing to one point five on the other, I'm okay with that.
Right, Karen?
Uh, yeah, I agree with Robert in that regard as well. Um, and it's interesting just looking at drawing that like the aerial view from the city. Both neighbors that are, are having some objections to this, both have docks that encroach on the space of the current neighbor. And uh I think it's just something about we need to be neighborly and ordered and neighborly and in compliance. And this looks like they are doing their very best to be in compliance and find a way to access their lot. And uh, yeah, I don't give them that and expect a building permit in place for the docks and everything else. It's to me, I'm, I'm okay with it.
Okay, okay.
I, I think it's a creative solution and uh also the one point five would be the rule if it was a one story from the street, it's going to look like a one story. So I'm good with.
Okay, Chris?
Uh, no further comments, Jim.
Um, uh, generally in agreement with what's been said so far. Um, I think the point about the walkway remaining on land rather than being over water is probably an important uh condition that should probably be reflected in the motion.
I think like we've done docks before too, and there was like all of the, I don't remember exactly. It was the one on Coney Island. But there was like all these rules about like how much and percentages and stuff like that. And so you'll still have to meet all of those rules.
So you're speaking though, saying that, that it needs to be um not on the, on the east side of the, the setback is only for the boat port at this point?
Yes, that's right. Okay. Yeah.
All right.
So with that, I, I would support.
Okay. Uh, so yeah, my only comment was really about parking a boat on the other side, it becomes a civil matter. Um, and hopefully, as you said, everybody else, we can all get along. Um, yes, Janice?
But we do have, you do have the option of adding additional conditions to make it very clear. And with variances, I do recommend that they be clear. So you could include in the wording of your variance that the variance is for a boat dock, a boat port only and does not include a walkway or additional docking space. It could also say that uh no docking is permitted on the east side of the um boat port.
Outside, outside of the property line.
Right.
But it's on someone else's property. And the other thing is, my understanding of this is that the access to this boat port is to the south.
Right.
And so that the boat is not swinging in in front of Mr. Pelican's, Pelican's property and entering from the.
So the orientation needs to be north and south with the access from the south. Correct?
No, so those, those could be added to.
Yeah, so and then the other comment was, um, you know, most, most boat lifts now are within the boat port, but we just want to make sure that that that, that that's the case, not having a boat, a boat lift outside of the boat port as well, because that can happen as well. So that's some of something we want to ensure happens.
Oh, I think it's included with like no docking on the east side. Which could be an encroachment.
But would could happen on the west side.
It could.
Yeah.
But then aren't we defining, defining the size of the boat port then?
But that's his property.
Any closer than four point five meters.
So the, you can't really talk about what's on the left.
Yeah.
You can only talk about what is in, in the encroachment. You can have a maximum number of feet. You can talk, you can define how much of what can approach. But you can't talk about what's not approaching into the side yard, not approaching into the other property. They're just not approaching into the required side yard.
Um, can you read the motion, please? And we can discuss any amendments?
This is the decision as written in the planning report. That application D thirteen twenty four oh three to secretly from the city of Canora zoning bylaw one oh one, two thousand fifteen, section four point one three D be approved to allow a two-story single detached dwelling with a minimum required western side yard of one point five meters and a dock with an eastern side yard of zero point zero meters is approved subject to the following condition. That a one point five meter easement is registered to grant the city of Canora access to storm sewer infrastructure.
Okay. So, um, we want to add from what I understand um, to further define that the east side um to zero is for the location of a boat port. Oh my.
Right.
Correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, anything else anybody wants?
And there'd be no docking on the east side?
And no dock on the east side. So is that something, is that, I mean, the east side isn't their property, the extension of their property? Is it something that we can say?
I would say that.
Yes, okay. No docking on the east side. Okay. So we'll just wait for, unless it will mend what we saw earlier. And then we'll get it right out again.
Okay, do we want to specify then as well that their entrance to the
Oh, yes.
dock means to be on north, south axis?
Yes, correct. So the boat, the boat port be oriented to the north and south with access only from the south for boats.
Say that again, sorry, north, south?
North, south orientation with access for boats from the south only.
So I will put the accessory structure boat port shall not include docking on the east side and that the boat port shall be oriented north, south with access from the, from boats to the south only as conditions because those can be reviewed at the building permit time. So the new amended motion that you've proposed would read that application D thirteen twenty four oh three to secretly from the city of Canora zoning bylaw one oh one, two thousand fifteen, section four point one three D be approved to allow a two-story single detached dwelling with a minimum required western side yard of one point five meters and an eastern side yard setback of zero point zero meters for the location of a, an accessory structure boat port only is approved and subject to the following conditions. One, that a one point five meter easement is registered to grant the city of Canora access to storm sewer infrastructure. Two, the accessory structure boat port shall not include docks on the eastern side. Three, that the boat port shall be oriented north, south with access from boats to the south only.
So the docking, so is that, so not including docks or not including boat docking?
And not include boat docking. On the east side.
Excuse me, could, could I chime in? Is Dave Pelican here? For one second, I just want.
No, Mr. Pel, Mr. Pelican, um, we, we have heard from you. Um, and so as I explained that this, this portion of the meeting is for the committee. And if we had had questions, then we would have been able to ask, but it is for discussion and decision by the committee at this point.
I understand, but there was a, a mistake in what was just spoken. She said that on, on the east side of the property, there was going to be a one point five meter allowed for access to the storm sewer. And it's actually two point five meter.
That was sent to.
Was it two point five?
One point five meter easement is registered and granted to the city of Canora with access to storm sewer infrastructure. That's right.
So, so you're telling me that it's not two point five meters between me and Al now? It's one point five? It was one point five on the other side?
It's so five, but the easement is one point five.
So on you, I don't know what the measurement is on your side? Is that what you're asking?
He's, he's asking that that's between the property line and the house on his side.
Is two point five meters, not one point five meters? I just want a clarification on that.
That is correct. It's two point five meter setback. One point five meters of it would be encumbered by an easement granting the city access over that land.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for that.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry to interrupt.
That's okay, thank you. All right, so, yes.
So the, the motion does say that approve to allow a two-story single detached dwelling with a minimum required western side yard of one point five meters. So we don't speak to the eastern side yard whatsoever. A condition, however, is that a one point five meter easement is registered to grant the city car with access to storms or infrastructure. So I can say on the east side, if that clarifies things for you?
Okay. Does anybody want to read in totality then, just to ask, please?
Yes. Okay, that application D thirteen twenty four oh three to secretly from the city of Canora zoning bylaw one oh one, two thousand fifteen, section four point one three D be approved to allow a two-story single detached dwelling with a minimum required western side yard setback of one point five meters and an eastern side yard setback for accessory structure boathouse only at zero point zero meters. Boathouse only at zero point zero meters, boat port only.
Yeah.
At zero point zero meters is approved, subject to the following conditions. One, that a one point five meter easement is registered to grant. The city of Canora access to storm sewer infrastructure on the eastern lot line. Two, the accessory structure boat port shall not include boat docking on the eastern lot line. Three, that the boat port be oriented north, south with access from boats to the south only.
Access for boats.
Yep, for boats.
Yeah, okay. Do I have a mover? Andrea, seconder? Karen, any further discussion?
No.
All in favor? Karen.
Thank you, Mr. Kabelka and to Mr. Stidnisky for being here this evening and representing this application. There is an appeal uh, period that will be subject to this minor variance, so although you will be eligible to make application for building permit. Building permits will not be able to be approved until after the appeal deadline, and that takes us to April ninth. So that's twenty days from the date of the decision, which is today. Um, there are appeal limitations, being the applicant, the minister, a specified person or a public body who can appeal this decision. If you or any member of the public has any questions, I will email out notice of this decision tomorrow. And you can certainly give myself an email if you'd like to further discuss.
Thank you. Okay, so there are no recommendations to counsel for amendments, um, old business. So to request change of conditions on application file number D ten twenty two fourteen. Um. So did you want to just go over that, or, oh, is there anybody who wishes to speak to that? Okay, Ms. Wheatley, would you like to speak to this?
I am here, um, Janice's report actually does a, a, a pretty good job summarizing the position, but basically I'll just. Uh, clarifying confirm that we're here today to request that the parkland dedication cash and lieu requirement in the Magnuson consent decision be removed. Just because it was given premature, the parkland dedication bylaw didn't come into force until December of twenty twenty three. And the planning act is clear that um, in order to request cash and lieu for parkland dedication, you need to have the bylaw in place first. Uh, so that's basically the, the essence of our request today.
Thank you. Let me just move over really briefly, or is everybody happy with that, do you understand what I'm saying here?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll let you off the hook, alright, is there anybody um, here?
Are we voting for it?
Well, we're going to, okay, anybody have any questions or comments?
So it's completely illegal, like even though we put it as a condition, it's like illegal to have that condition?
For, for that period of time at.
But wasn't it a, a, a condition for a variance?
It would, no, it was not, it was a condition of a sub subdivision approval. That we take uh, parkland cash and move a parkland dedication as. Was spoken.
So there was like zero amendments to. Like the plan, like they got no amendments to anything. When they put this thing together.
So all of the other conditions and of this subdivision are still in place. They're asking us to remove the condition to pay parkland dedication.
Yes, but they, um, like. There was other. Like, uh, we bent the rules in other circumstances. And allowed things to fit the project, because we want the development to happen. And part of the conditions was the uh, parkland money. Uh, to be put forward and they got other, when we were looking at the application of the whole. We had that condition put in and they got other things, like this is the property that was adjoining. Uh, I'm, I'm forgetting the.
It's, it's just north of Darlington Bay on the, on the. On the uh, east side of the bridge.
Yeah, but like what were some of the amendments that we had made when we looked at that property?
That one. I wonder if you're thinking of uh, variances for something else, this was, um, there were two consents. At the time, one was for an easement, right, for a driveway, and the other one was to divide the land. I can try and pull it up for you, okay? So there were not, there, I know it's pretty straightforward.
Oh, and we were just changing, it was the one where we changed the lot line so that the driveway could be.
Yeah, there were no variances required for this.
Okay, yeah. You're right, I was confusing it with another file.
Right, further down, I think.
So Ms. Wheatley is correct that at the, at the time that this subdivision application was approved. We did not have a parkland dedication bylaw, we did have language in our official plan. Speaking. We thought allowing us to do this, however, we did not have a bylaw. And under the rules of the planning act, we should not have done that, so. Is correct that we was immature in making this review. We have, we have since adopted the bylaw.
So this committee is empowered with. Changing that?
You, you made the decision, it was your condition, you kind of made that decision. Um, it's a lot easier than having a, than challenge it in court.
So, but I thought nobody could challenge our decisions in court anymore.
You can't challenge your decision to the, um. Ontario Land Tribunal, but you never would be able to challenge something through the law.
So the other part of that is that when there is a condition of approval. If it's deemed to be a minor condition, it doesn't have to be circulated again. And this because it really is, it is a legality, right, so.
Well, it's a lot of money to the city.
Well, no, I mean, the, the fact is you couldn't do it legally.
But we put it, it was put in as the condition, they knew that when we did the approval, it was put in as a condition.
But the, there was no bylaw that, that was permitting that at the time. So it, the, it should not have gone in, right?
It, it was, it was an error on behalf of the department.
Anybody else have any comments or questions, Chris? Renee? No, okay, uh, anybody else wish to speak to this, is Mr. Magnuson there, I don't know if he wanted to say anything or? Okay. Um, could we have the motion?
Certainly. That the request to change of the decision of the application for consent file number D ten twenty two fourteen. By removing condition number three stating cash equivalent of five percent of the land based on current value assessment. Be provided as required under the city of current official plan two thousand fifteen policy eight eleven four E. Is approved pursuant to subsection fifty three twenty three of the planning act and that the change is deemed minor per section fifty three twenty six.
Okay. Any, oh, may I have a mover please? Robert, seconder? Eric, any further discussion? Okay, we'll call for the vote, then please, all in favor? Carrie, and the post, and Carrie. Thank you. Making it sweetly.
Thank you, committee.
Thank you. Okay, so no new business. Um, old business, I'm just going to encourage everybody again, if there's some, one of the old things that you can make it to. This year, um, I really recommend that you give it a whirl, I, I mean. You'll learn, you'll learn a lot.
Uh, one of the questions I have is that, um, I require to still travel with my child. And then it's just easier to just travel as a family, because then, uh, she can hang out with her father most of the time. And so. Okay.
If your family travels with you? I, I don't see why not, as long as, I mean, it's, um, I shouldn't speak out of turn, Janice, um, this.
Like I, like I would cover, like, the children's flights, uh, and my partner's flights, uh, just.
We have no objection to your partner and his children sharing your.
I don't know if there still is, but there actually used to be a companion program. Yeah, that's a great point, certainly, there certainly still might be.
Cause I can't go away from Campbell for three days.
Mr. Janice said we wouldn't object to, to your family traveling.
Then the September one debates would be good.
Okay. I will send out another email to all members, just of those dates. And if everyone did.
June one is like too early for my partner to request vacation, we had to submit our vacation up till July. Like months ago, and so the July. December schedule hasn't been set.
Okay. So, um, with that, I think we can adjourn, um, have a chair please. Renee and that A the block, Jen, thank you, everybody. Thank you. Thanks for your.